I do not warm them for you. Sorry. I warmed the ones in the bath. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. The Romulus Central School District Board of Education meets publicly conducted business in accordance with the law. The public is invited to observe these proceedings but is not entitled to respond or disrupt them, especially when such disturbances ruin caution to the district's code of conduct and the welcoming spirit of our district. The public is reminded of the context of board meetings. Board members are volunteers. Audience members are visitors to school grounds and student and staff well-being is at the heart of board operations. Visitors are reminded of the courage it takes to speak up as members of our community and the importance of encouraging civic and civil engagement. The Board strives to hear all community voices during its public meetings in a safe, respectful, and orderly manner. The behavior that we expect of all students in our classrooms is also expected from visitors at board meetings. In an effort to ensure that community members' concerns are heard, the Board reminds speakers to address the Board in a civil manner. Refrain from discussing specific personnel or students. Limit outbursts and limit unnecessary noise. The Board encourages an atmosphere of respect and tolerance and strict adherence to its code of conduct. We will now move into our public comments and I have a brief statement to share with you regarding public comments. The Romulus Central School District Board of Education invites public comment at this time to those who have signed up in advance with the district clerk. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Written remarks may be provided to the Board if time expires before a speaker completes their remarks. We ask individuals to state their name prior to comments and to provide the district clerk with their contact information for purposes of follow-up. Although the Board will not respond directly to individual comments at this time, items brought to the attention of the Board may be taken under consideration for future response, action, or follow-up with the speaker. Issues related to specific district students, whether positive, negative, or neutral, must be brought to the attention of the superintendent of schools privately in order to safeguard student privacy. The Board reserves the right to terminate a speaker's comments if their comments are in excess of five minutes, are repetitive, or are not appropriate for discussion in an open public forum. All visitors are reminded to abide by the district code of conduct and to be respectful and courteous, both the speakers and as audience members. We are a community focused on veteran public education for our students, some of whom may be present. Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. I do have public comments that have been requested in advance. If you would like to use the microphone, you're welcome to do so. It's located right here. Our first public speaker is Ms. Jen Salome.
President, Fabin, Superintendent Rats, Board members, faculty, staff, public appearance, thank you for having us here. I'm Jen Salome. I'm a lifelong member of this community, Romulus graduate, and a mother of a ninth grade student here at Romulus. I've come before this Board before with concerns both on behalf of myself and my son, and also on behalf of teachers, staff, and other parents in this district. I know the question has always been, why is Jen Salome speaking for other people? And where are all of these other people that she speaks of? I've answered this multiple times to this Board, and I'll do so again tonight for the Board and also for the public. I'm not afraid, period. I'm not afraid to speak up. And I'm definitely not afraid to speak up on behalf of those who are scared to speak up. My advocacy for others here in this community is based upon personal experiences, facts, and basic human decency. You stand up for those who may not be able to stand up for themselves. There are individuals in this building who have labeled me in a negative way. I'm okay with that. Because to me, it just solidifies that I'm doing the right thing and the just thing. This Board has stood behind procedure, and I respect that. But I feel that you've turned a blind eye to my pleas for discussion, transparency, and change before it's had to come to this. You don't have to believe me when I say that there are other teachers, staff, parents, and students in this district who fear when they enter through those doors. But I hope that after tonight, they feel a little safer to come forward, and then you'll have your proof. I'm here tonight to tell you that I've worked tirelessly to ensure protection for all those who have reached out to me. And since yesterday, the numbers have only doubled. I continue to do so. And once this Board and the teachers' union can make a promise that those who have bravely come forward will be protected and change will be implemented, I believe you're going to be amazed and somewhat ashamed at the number of individuals who appear before you. With that said, I'm going to read a message I received from a teacher recently here at RCS. This message has been redacted quite a bit, but I think the message will still come through clearly. The message has been redacted to protect the teacher's anonymity, so please excuse me if at times it doesn't flow. I think you'll still get the message. Hello, Jen. I wanted to reach out first and foremost to say thank you, thank you, thank you. So many of us, ten plus, just in the last couple of days, I have spoken with lately here at school, appreciate you for what you're doing for us, the students, and the overall well-being of the school. It is sad that we are so afraid to say anything because of what happens if we do. I am trying to balance being a good teacher. I can't handle them coming after me. That is why my name can't be attached. I do want you to know from the perspective of someone who works here what is going on. We are a very split-up district on purpose that have been treated poorly, for lack of a better word, for so long that some have accepted it as the norm. For example, we have heard time and time again that it is just this individual, it is just how this individual operates when trying to address issues, as if we are supposed to turn a blind eye to the behavior exhibited because it's just this individual. For so long, we have tolerated intolerable behavior because we are all led to believe it is like that at every school. I have even heard that a colleague said to another colleague, "If you don't like it, you're free to go somewhere else." Some have had enough and left, two good teachers with ten years of experience in just the last three years. Why should we have to be the ones to go when it isn't us causing the turmoil? Why does the statement come out of someone instead of, wow, what is going on behind these walls? And what can we do to help? We are told that a specific individual does X, Y, and Z for us, so we need to do as we're told, or else we could lose it. Doesn't that sound like manipulation? Often, we have been told to deal and support the administration because it could be so much worse with new coming in. Well, what if it could be better? What if it could be great? Why are we threatened with worst-case scenarios when the morale is at an all-time low here at this school? We have become accustomed to speak very little to our colleagues other than grade-level partners because it is mistaken as cooler talk. It is frowned upon to be professional and learn and grow with each other because administration doesn't know what we are talking about, so we can't be trusted. But unfortunately, this only applies if you aren't in the favorite category. The favorites can stay and do whatever they want.
I literally have one paragraph. May I have one second?
I'm sorry, we can't. We need to abide by our policy, but please do send your final remarks to us via email.
She can have my thirty seconds.
No, I'm sorry, we need to follow our policy to limit individual comments to five minutes.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Salome. Please send any additional to us via email. Thank you. Okay, our next public comment is from Mr. Sappio. Joe Sappio?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, everybody out here, thank you so very much for coming. There has been nobody here. There's been the Board members, and there's been what has been fed to the Board, absent any public comment, absent any input, absent any transparency. And it's an idea of what we can or cannot say to the Board. Rule 1.1.2, Public Comment. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes with additional time granted at the discretion of the Board, President, or his or her designated... No, you're not allowed to talk. And that is what we have heard time and time again. You're not allowed to talk. If I can finish her statement. Then we get no retaliation. This doesn't come in big elaborate factors, but small strategic retaliations. Nobody wants to talk about what goes on here for fear of being retaliated against again. Repeatedly, we hear the Board administration say they don't know what is going on, they aren't hearing anyone complain, so it must only just be a couple people, or they can't fix what they aren't hearing or know about. Well, when you turn a blind eye to the want-to-know, but actually don't-want-to-know survey that was sent to the staff to fill out for some reason, we didn't ask why was it sent? Anyone go back to the why? Why did the district create a culture committee? And why did they want feedback? The district didn't hire out and create a committee based on the culture of the school because things are good. The survey that had over twenty staff members give honest feedback about different issues here at school with over seventy-five percent or more of them being negative, then what? We are left feeling like our voice doesn't matter, and some people feel defeated again and think, why bother to speak up when it doesn't matter? Please know what you are doing isn't going unnoticed, and it is appreciated more than you know. So many of us, for the first time, feel supported by you and others, and we can never thank you enough. Sorry again for not being able to use my name, but maybe sometime in the future that might be different. Now, I don't know why she wasn't allowed to say that, why she was silenced, why we can't hear from the people that this Board is supposed to be representing. Ladies and gentlemen, I advocate for people for a living. That's my job. But when it comes to home, I am much like a lot of people. I feel like, oh, maybe if I just be quiet, it'll be okay for my child, for my family. Well, I've had enough. We started an investigation. We were heard. I don't know if we were heard correctly. I don't know if the Board was told about the results of the investigation. I don't know anything about that because the letter that Jennifer and I got about our student, well, let's just say it wasn't that informative. We have been advised time and time again, well, that could have been handled differently. This could have been handled differently. When are we going to stop handling, saying we're going to handle things differently? And handle things differently? When are we going to take action? When are we going to have the transparency that is required and demanded of this Board and everybody else? Am I doing okay with you over there? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. How was my time?
You got a minute?
So I've got a minute now before I am silenced. And that's okay. Because when, again, this started, there's nobody in the Board of Education room. Now look at this auditorium. I'm proud of everybody for coming. I'm proud of everybody for being recognized. I'm proud of everybody for making this Board say, give us some answers, give us some concerns, give us some feedbacks. This is about our kids. This is about our community. This is about our school. And let us have some transparency with the decisions that are being made. What is in the surveys, not who would have the audacity to disclose a public document. Let's fix the problem. Let's not be a whistleblower. Now, we've had the Me Too movement. This is our Me Too.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Chris Ryan.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Chris Ryan. I'm going to probably fly through this because I do not want to be silenced. Hi, my name is Chris Ryan. I am here to address the Romulus Board of Education, to let you know there's some things occurring at your school. If you are worried about shock, sad you. In full disclosure, you should know that I'm very close to Jen Salome, Maddie Sappio, Joe Sappio, Molly Sappio. They are family to me. I'm not here to protect Jen and Joe. I feel they can do that on their own. I'm here because you, as a Board, should be aware of the toxic environment at your school. I've listened to, read texts from your staff, teachers, administration thanking Jen for all she's done to expose the unhealthy situation at Romulus. They thanked her, but immediately stated they wanted to stay anonymous out of fear of retaliation. Quotes like, "I have to pay bills. I can't take a chance losing my job." Or, "If I speak up, they make it uncomfortable for me to work here." I am here because I saw Jen and Joe go through the chain of command you told them to do. They reached out to teachers, to principals, supervisors, and the Board of Education with the concerns, detailing facts. You did nothing. You as a Board say you can't do anything unless the teachers come forward. Believe me, when I stand here and tell you, they are scared to death. They are afraid to express their feelings out of fear. So I, we, the public, are here again to let you know that there's a problem here at Romulus. Can you hear me? I am here because you stand by your rules and chain of commands that have allowed this toxic situation to occur for years. I am here because you ignored the fact that a cultural committee was formed, a survey was completed that allowed your staff to speak anonymously, and the Board threw it in the trash can. Why? Am I going to get the answer someday? Who made this decision to ignore the survey? Did the Board vote? I'm throwing the survey in the trash? Who guided you making this decision? I, we, the public, are here because you blindly believe in your administration without finding the truth. I am here because I feel you don't know the truth, because any decent human being would not allow these injustices to occur regardless of the procedure. I am here because the chain of command has failed us. We are here because you, the Board, did not give them all the facts. We are here because some of your staff look at us concerned parents as the enemy, saying we must rally together, only invite people with our opinion. And by the way, there's pizza. I am here because the public, the press, is here because I feel that you have a minority of people in positions of power that want things their way, and if you don't cave, you will be punished. I am here because I've witnessed activity in this school for years. I'm not coming for the last week. I've known these people for over the years. I've witnessed this for years. Do you think I want to be here? I am here because it's the right thing to do. People are living fear. I am here because just in the last two weeks, more people are coming forward. I came home from work today, and she had ten more people call her. All saying the same thing. Please don't throw them away. Disgusting. I am here because your toxic environment has spilled over into my field of family causing some nice... I am here because I witnessed a fourteen-year-old young man who was counted smart and a teammate so mentally affected by what happened to him and his mother that he missed two games of his favorite sport. He wanted to transfer to another school. He didn't get out of bed. Do you guys hear me? We are here because the situation is spilling over and adversely affecting our students. I am here to ask each Board member to express their opinion on what's going on, how to address this unhealthy situation. Then, of course, if we need to do the investigation ourselves. Put egos aside, don't chat with your friend group. We all know who's friends around here. It's a small community. We know who's going to vote for who. Put egos aside, don't just chat with your friend group. It's a small community. We all know who hangs out with who. Discuss your issues with your enemies to seek the truth. Each of you should make your opinion public so I can perform the voting, how to vote. I didn't want to come here and do this, believe me. We are here to remind you that constituents are the top chain of command. We are here to let the teachers and the staff know that it is safe to come forward and inform the Board and the public about the toxic environment here at Romulus. We are here trying to help. Unfortunately, we are being labeled as the enemy by the very people that are dividing this community. We are going to remind you that you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. I am here as a chiropractor, thirty-six years' experience, and I am concerned not only with the children's education, but also the health of everyone in this building. Just a... Three more paragraphs, and they won't let me go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please do email any additional comments to the Board for our review.
And we will get answers to the questions that I asked?
Someday. Cindy Warren Zidey is our next public comment.
Is it on? I'll start until I speak.
I will.
All right. I'll start. Do you want to know how it goes? I suppose I don't know yet, but just in case. No, I told them not to start. That's all right. We have a mic for us to speak. If it doesn't work, not a problem. All right. So, first of all, y'all know me, I was here two weeks ago. Been here, born, raised, my whole life. My grandfather, my father, my brothers, sat where you folks are sitting. I sat on a board for twelve years in a town and a county. Never, ever did we not extend somebody that wanted to speak. You have a five-minute rule. You also can say yes. You only have a few more minutes? Go ahead. So, Ms. Board President, I don't understand that, and that doesn't sit well with everybody that's... It's a thankless job, but it's an important job. And the thing that y'all have to realize is you're here for these people, not the administrators, not the... You're here for the people that pay the taxes and send their children here. I got involved, not because one person called and asked me. I had a few people call in the community and say, would you help us out? Would you come and support us speaking to the Board? I'd be more than happy to, because you know what? I heard the same stories over and over again, not from one person, but from many people, people that I grew up with, people that I trust. So, I'm speaking. By New York State Government Code Number 549543, school board meetings can incorporate public comment, period, which allows community opportunities to the opportunity to ask questions about agendas, voice opinions, on-school operations, and call issues to the attention of the Boards. That's what we're doing. That's why we shouldn't be shut down with five minutes. And people that don't want to hear the truth are usually people that are trying to hide some. Hearing the same stories over and over and over again, and knowing I've only got five minutes to speak, what I'd like to ask of this Board, because I really truly think that your hearts are in the right place, maybe not every Board member, but I know there's people on this Board that know right from wrong, left from right. I'm asking you to call for a full investigation, which you have the right to do. I did it when I was a county supervisor, and there was stuff happening at the administration top level in the county, and it took me a while to get my other Board members, but we called for an investigation, and guess what? Everything that those county employees came to tell me was the truth. And unless you do a full investigation, and you look at the people allegedly that are having the same complaints about the same people, you're never going to know. So I call on this Board for you tonight to make a motion, one of you, vote on it, do it in public, so we know who's committed to this school and who isn't. Do I have any time?
You do.
I do?
One minute.
That's crazy, but I guess the only other thing I'd like to say is, there is a union here. I work for a company where there is no union, and we have no say. I would hope that some of the teachers that are fearful to come forward, use your union. Your union rep is for you, not for anybody else. I guess I'm on set, so please, Board, do the right thing and call for an investigation. If there's a rotten egg here in this group, you need to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next comment is from Linda Masseller.
Yeah. Okay. So, I don't think I need a microphone. Just as... I'm Linda Masseller. I'm a parent of former students here in the district. I've had a lot of involvement in the district over the years. My kids are both graduated now, but I was a member of PTCC, the Sports Boosters, Music and Drama Boosters, anything that anybody asked me to do, I was a member of. A current member, I'm currently a trustee on RFEO. And I... I had a few people call in the community and say, would you help us out? Would you come and support us speaking to the board? I'd be more than happy to, because you know what? I heard the same stories over and over again, not from one person, but from many people. People that I grew up with, people that I trust. So, I'm speaking. By New York State Government Code Number 549543, school board meetings can incorporate public comment period, which allows community opportunities to ask questions about agendas, voice opinions, on-school operations, and call issues to the attention of the boards. That's what we're doing. That's why we shouldn't be shut down with five minutes. And people that don't want to hear the truth are usually people that are trying to hide something. Hearing the same stories over and over and over again, and knowing I've only got five minutes to speak, what I'd like to ask of this board, because I really truly think that your hearts are in the right place, maybe not every board member, but I know there's people on this board that know right from wrong, left from right. I'm asking you to call for a full investigation, which you have the right to do. I did it when I was a county supervisor, and there was stuff happening at the administration top level in the county, and it took me a while to get my other board members, but we called for an investigation, and guess what? Everything that those county employees came to tell me was the truth. And unless you do a full investigation, and you look at the people allegedly that are having the same complaints about the same people, you're never going to know. So I call on this board for you tonight to make a motion, one of you. Vote on it, do it in public, so we know who's committed to this school and who isn't. Do I have any time? I do? That's crazy, but I guess the only other thing I'd like to say is, there is a union here. I work for a company where there is no union, and we have no say. I would hope that some of the teachers that are fearful to come forward, use your union. Your union rep is for you, not for anybody else. Um, I guess I'm on set, so please, board, do the right thing and call for an investigation. If there's a rotten egg here in this group, we need to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next comment is from Linda Masseller. Yeah? Okay, so, um, I don't think I need a microphone. Just as, I'm Linda Masseller. I'm a parent of former students here in the district. I've had a lot of involvement in the district over the years. My kids are both graduated now, but I was a member of PTCC, the sports boosters, music and drama boosters, anything that anybody asked me to do, I was a member of. A current member, I'm currently a trustee on RFEO. And I absolutely believe in the power and the value of this district and its staff and its people. I have a vested interest in the success of the district. I've lived here for over 30 years. I expect to live here for a lot longer, and I really want to respectfully ask the board to specifically consider the job of the Board of Education, and I'm going back to, this is the New York State Association of School Boards, to keep in mind that the school board's job is to focus on the ends, while the superintendent focuses on the ways and the means to attain the ends. In other words, the board oversees the education of the students and is responsible for the school district operations, but does not directly run the district's day-to-day operations. The board is the district's Board of Directors and is responsible for establishing goals, setting policy, and overseeing resources. The superintendent is the district's CEO. They work for the school board, and that is the person who translates the policy into action, and that is consistent with the goals established by the school board. The superintendent and the staff make the day-to-day decisions that affect the operation of the school district, deploying resources, assigning staff, and documenting results. No one, nowhere, can perform effectively with many masters. To work for all of the parents in the district, all of the school board people, all of the administration, creates an incredible stress on the staff and the people who are trying to educate our children. I realize that my opinion is not consistent with that that has been shared so far, but I really believe that we have to make sure that the board is focused on the top level. The administrators are allowed to do their job. If there's a specific issue, I have worked off and on with these administrators over the years. I understand that there can be personal issues. I understand that there could be things that people are concerned about. The staff has two unions, right? I think there's two. Right? That they can... Three, okay, three unions, that they can use to elevate some of their concerns. There is definitely a place for the school board to do the oversight, the administration to do their job, the staff to do their job. And I'm very concerned that we are creating an environment here that is perhaps more toxic than what people are talking about. So I just, I want to thank you guys for what you do, but also remind you that the board is at this level, the administrators are at this level, the staff is at this level. I'm not saying in hierarchy, I'm saying in their function. And I really appreciate what the staff and the, uh, the the teachers, the non-instructural staff, I really appreciate what they put into the kids here, and I just, I value it as a district. That concludes the public comment portion of our meeting. Board, we're going to move on to 1.2, Resolutions to Approve the Minutes. I needed a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education from the meeting on January 9th. Second discussion. All in favor? Thank you. And we also need approval of the agenda this evening for the recommendation of the superintendent. Discussion. All in favor?
You guys have to speak up. I can't, I can't sit here and be here.
We will not be having an executive session at the beginning of the meeting. Announcements and reports. The next regular meeting of the board will be Tuesday, February 13th, at 6:30 in the Board of Education conference room, which is in the administrative wing down the hall. I do want to say that we appreciate everyone's comments this evening. Please understand that issues and concerns cannot be addressed unless we have specific information. If you would like to submit a complaint, please refer to our policies for the process. These policies are available online on our school's website, and are also available by contacting our district clerk, Mrs. Suzie Nicholson. Thank you again for the comments that you've shared this evening. Moving on in our agenda to Section 2.2, Resolutions. We need to adopt a draft policy of the district policy revisions to the Workplace Violence Prevention Policy in compliance with the New York State Labor Law. And also, we will be having a first read of the revised Non-Resident Student Policy 7132. Discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to page three of our agenda. Um, these are resolutions, I'm sorry. Oh, I skipped, I skipped Mr. Roth's. And myself. Apologies. I flipped that page right over. Um, so, yes, we will back up to Section 3.2, Announcements and Reports. So, for my report, it's the president's report. I want the board to be updated on where we are with the superintendent search. So I'm probably going to summarize some things that you already know, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page of where we are with the process. So as we know, the board has appointed Lynn Rutnick and the Wayne Figer Lakes BOCs to lead our search for our next superintendent in, as a result of Mr. Roth's retirement as of the end of June of this school year. So the goal is to have a new superintendent in place here to lead our district by July 1st. The Board of Education is leading the search process with the guidance and, you know, work and recruitment efforts of the Wayne Figer Lakes BOCs led by the superintendent, Superintendent Lynn Rutnick. The plan for the superintendent search that we are developing is to have stakeholder groups that will provide feedback and help us develop a candidate profile for what type of leadership qualities, skill set, work experience, and educational goals would be the best fit for our district. We are in the process of forming those stakeholder groups in terms of, I should say, planning to form those stakeholder groups by identifying who they're going to be in terms of groups. It will absolutely involve teachers, staff, community members. And, you know, we really want to get everyone's input. Another part of the process is we're going to be conducting a survey so that those who might not be able to participate in a stakeholder group can still have a mechanism to submit their comments and desires to the district. Our next steps are, of course, the recruitment. I know many people have expressed concerns that it's almost February, are we going to have somebody in place by July? But people that have led this search, our search consultants, have assured us that people that are interested know that Romulus is looking for a new superintendent. You know, the word's out. We are trying to be as, so, I'm sorry to finish my previous thought, so yes, the word's out that Mr. Roth's retiring and that we are looking for a new superintendent. When we get to the point of opening up the recruitment process, people that are looking and are interested will submit their applications, and we didn't really see a need to have, like, an extended, several-month-long recruitment process. You know, sometimes having extended recruitment processes can cause candidates to lose interest or possibly maybe become interested in another district as, you know, superintendency positions open up. So our plan is to have a short timeframe for the recruitment to officially accept applications. There will be involvement with the stakeholder groups with the interview process. And I share this information in terms of the plan in the goal of being transparent with you all for where we really realistically are in the process. But please know that these plans are still under development. But at this point, you know, we will have multiple people participating in the interviews because we definitely want to bring a leader to this district who's going to, you know, be able to be a respected leader amongst all of you, who's going to make changes that are necessary, as well as, you know, be able to guide us with our curriculum, with our staffing, with our finances, with the capital project. The list of duties for a superintendent, you know, could go on and on, but it requires, you know, obviously, a diverse skill set between finances, communication, leadership, education, you know, keeping apprised of all the regulatory changes that occur in this environment. So, you know, we really want to be able to chuck all the boxes with the candidate that we end up appointing. And I say "we" because, you know, the final decision will be the board's decision. It's one of the things that the board is charged with doing as your elected Board of Education, and that is appointing the superintendent. So, board members, this is the most important thing that we will be doing. So this is a big job for us, so we appreciate everyone's support and understanding as we work through this process. Please know that the mechanism for communication is that Superintendent Rutnick will send periodic updates that will be emailed to staff, sent out through Parents Clear, posted on the Facebook page, and potentially also shared or picked up with, you know, local news media as deemed appropriate, you know, when we reach major miles soon. So please know that those updates are available, you know, coming from Superintendent Rutnick, as we know more about the process. Board members, do you have any questions for me about the superintendent search process? Okay. Thank you. Board members, it is now your turn for our board members forum. Is there anything that anyone would like to share with the board?
I would just like to publicly thank Mollie Collinsworth for coming to basically every story event that there is in Romulus and taking these parents, or taking pictures. I know as a parent, I haven't had to take a single picture of my son, and I've been able to watch the game, and so I just want to thank her for her efforts. She no longer has any children playing sports, and has them for quite some time, so I would just like to publicly say thank you to her.
Agreed. Yes, many thanks to Mrs. Collinsworth. I also have enjoyed all the pictures, and I still do. I love seeing the little kids and everything that they're doing, and the big kids, so thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Raff.
So for the Budget Committee, we had our bi-weekly meeting before the board meeting tonight. Unfortunately, or during the Governor's State of the State address, she made some tough rural budgetary decisions and decided to historically underfund rural school districts. So we are in the process of taking a look at the budget as one of our other major jobs as the Board of Education, to develop a budget and put it out to the taxpayers of the timeframe set forth by the government. We are hoping to have, actually, Ed and Marty are updating the budget daily, and we get communication very regularly from them, and I appreciate all of your hard work. So we will be meeting very soon again to talk about the budget and some challenges that the government has set out.
Thank you, Mrs. Raff. Any other board members have any comments to share?
I have a question. What is the status of the superintendent search postcards that were being sent to the district residents? Do they have Base Square, FaceTime, or Parentsware, Facebook, or whatever? They don't have access, and we have a lot of district residents that don't have access. How are we keeping them so we have full transparency in the superintendent search?
We do have representatives from our appointed search committee team here, so I'm going to refer this question to Shannon.
We have the draft that you wrote, and we'll share it tomorrow.
So when?
We'll share the draft in the board tomorrow.
Is it the goal to be a little more timely? I mean, we communicated it on Facebook, we had it on Twitter, but that was two weeks ago, so a lot of district residents, they don't have access to the internet, don't know anything about this. Can we get it closer together? Will we start communicating electronically with the other one, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
I had to briefly, I was on to Spain Fanda, I was supposed to talk to her last week. A special time with Minnay, I was talking about the recent news, that Romulus district, we are dating, like, for a little bit, we were very mild with you. And I didn't go too far, I was very, very impressed, so I kind of spent my thanks to staff, you know. You talk about families and budgets, and it's tough to deal with that, but it really shows in the data and results that our staff does do a great job on. Second thing, which is a personal note to the land, as we thought it was, second to the double ear infection. And I would think this double ear infection, Paige, you feel a little bit, and I care about school. It was interesting for me to see that every morning she woke up, and was like, oh, there's a bus, we're getting a bus. Every time she's like, oh, what's time on that one? It was part of her day that she, like, looked forward to that, like, I was a kid homeless, and I worked on what I would have been doing in school. So it's interesting to see that, you know, she really enjoys it, and I want to thank the staff that they've done a great job, you know, she has a great time at school, not only learning, see that's a result, but that it's apparently enjoyable time, even when you're at home, so that was, it was interesting to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, and thank you also for the reminder that you have, you know, the follow-up from what you had shared in our last board meeting about the test results and, you know, recognizing how well the Romulus students have scored compared to our neighboring districts. Now, of course, we want all children to do well and succeed, but it is a matter of pride for us when our students do very noticeably well. So, yes, you know, thanks to the teachers, the staff, the parents for being able to see this, you know, these educational gains. I know the board was very concerned about learning loss, about participation and engagement with students during COVID. And it's been great to see that, you know, our, I think, when I think of Romulus, one of the words that I think of the most is resilience. You know, we've been able to overcome things. We've had a lot of families in our district that have had personal tragedies, struggles across all the entire spectrum that you can struggle with, financial, familial, you know, socially, everything. You know, you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we're hitting the whole triangle with our community. So I think it's amazing to see the resilience and the great test force that have come forth, so thank you for the reminder of that. Any other board members? Thank you. Mr. Roth will now share his superintendent's report.
Thank you. I am going to follow up on Mr. Brewer's comments about budget process. This is a pre-bation couple of slides here. On the screen, and you have this packet on paper at your tables. Really quick overview. Budget is something that superintendents and business officials look at throughout all 12 months of every single year. Mr. Einstein and I have been doing this with the board now, going into our 11th budget, and I will say that this one is starting to present some challenges that we have not seen in the past. It is my responsibility to do this with you, and take you through at least where the Budget Committee is to this point, and talk about the rest of the process as we go towards the annual vote, all right? Some of these things are solid, and some of these things are not. So, like I said, for the entire 12 months, we're looking at the budget, but really, from January to April is the critical period for planning and for looking at expenses, revenues, and the ability to balance those two things to come up with a budget to present to the voters, all right? We are obviously in the January to April part of this process, where we receive one of the first pieces that's usually a solid piece, right? People talk about the executive budget that comes out every January, or the governor's budget that comes out every January. budget that comes out every January, and for 10 years running, that has not been a big surprise for us, that's pretty much matched the predictions that we've made because we've seen some steady increases in state aid over the years. Romulus, like many districts in the state, has also enjoyed a status under the state's calculation for state aid, where we've been held harmless to losing state aid. So, even though it might sound strange that there's a pretty complicated formula that takes into account the community's wealth, the student's wealth, the number of students, that formula has not mathematically run for many, many years for many, many districts. In this year's executive run, the governor announced, and also the Division of Budget announced, that it was time to make this formula start running the way it should. Because our economics have shifted in Romulus really since 2007, when our aid ratio was much higher than it is now, and our wealth ratio was much lower than it is now, right? To apply the formula all at once makes a pretty big hit. So, typical years on this slide, where I'm not going to read through every step, you've got the budget here, but typical year runs like the slide here, and I put in the dates for this year's budget adoption by the board April 9, and the budget vote with the community May 21st. That's been clicking along pretty regularly for the last 10 years. In this year so far, here are some differences. Not only are we transitioning off the use of about $2 million over the last three years, which we have used three-quarters of for one-time purchases that don't carry over into future budgets, we still do have about 25% of that $2 million figure that is included in the first look at next year's budget, right? So, that's one transition that's taking place this year. So, 25% of $2 million, right, $500,000. That is a number that we've worked with in the past, that we've balanced budgets with in the past, between tax increase, the levy, right, between use of reserves, between the ability to make efficiencies and lower costs where we can. However, to take the change in the aid formula in one year, imagine that's actually 50% of what our total hold harmless amount is. Our total hold harmless amount in New York State is $1 million of our $4 million state aid. If we were to experience that much of a decrease all at once, that would be a really big challenge to take on. So, what the Budget Committee is working with us on right now is looking at how the predicted change from the governor's run would impact the balance of the budget going into next year. Starting tomorrow, this is one of the pieces that's a little bit different from previous years, starting tomorrow, Mr. Einstein and I will meet with all of the administrators and the supervisors to re-present these slides, to talk about the potential impact on the budget. We've gone through this information of the Budget Committee tonight, let them know where we're at, and we will start the process in a much more detailed version than we do in other years of looking at every part of the operation by savings. So, I feel it's important for not only you as the board, or anybody who's tuning in here, to understand this is a big change for us in how we look at our finances. What we have not seen in 10 years is a big hit to state aid in January without knowing where that's going to be in April. So, if you're familiar, and I know you are, but I'll just read it in the line. The state is supposed to pass its budget every year by April 1st. Typically, the legislative budget that comes on in April is very, very close to the governor's run. If that happens this year, we stand to lose additional $528,000 for the state aid, which we will have to find ways to come up with balancing the budget for the year. That amount of production is something that is not realistic to expect to make up the head of the voting, right, this action. So, we need to look for other efficiencies if this number is going to stay. So, the final steps down the bottom, right, where we're at, kind of starting tomorrow, we'll be getting rid of the expenses and the revenues, which much, much larger than we were. So, we need to look at all parts of the operation to see where we can find savings. If that persists through April, we'll be making some difficult decisions between now and April 9, the budget. So, in addition to that meeting that takes place with our supervisors and our administrators tomorrow morning, I'll be reaching out to our union representatives and let them know the same information if they're not here tonight, unless we hear that, and we will begin the process more intensely from now at April to try to balance the budget, is what we have to work with. Now, that's a quick run-through, and I know that the Budget Committee members are aware of that, but one question, is the rest of the panel aware of that?
I do have a question. So, with being on the Budget Committee, I understand that the federal stimulus grants that we, you know, enjoyed during COVID are now going away, but it seems to have taken you guys a prize that the foundation aid has decreased. Did we get any anticipated notice, or was there any way that we could have planned to have half a million dollars less in our budget for next year? It's like...
There was no pre, I get the question. There was no preview from our end, either in Meskis, Mesbuck, Rural Schools, right, Fort County, many of the groups that we work with and monitor that talk about state aid. The message from the governor and the budget was that all districts in New York State outside of the Big Five are fully funded to their reserves, and so now it is time to exercise the foundation aid formula as mathematics of influence and call for. We need to get a heads up prior to the governor's run that this guy's...
Essentially, because we manage our finances well, we've been fully funded with our reserves, now they're cutting our aid? Am I hearing that right?
That, not cutting, okay?
Okay.
Not every district experiences the same amount of save harmless. Save harmless was a concept that actually used going back many, many years to present districts like ours with experience of reduction in enrollment, or shifts in economics from getting less state aid following year than they did the year before, with that with the save harmless in that. Essentially, you couldn't do any worse than you did the year before. If that's removed, and that is what the governor has explained the intention of this run is, if that's removed, some districts lose as little as 9% of that amount of save harmless, some lose as much as 50%. We're on the 50% end of our economics and the way the formula runs around, and that was not a heads up to districts, but that was going to happen, definitely. Same as every other year, from January to April, what happens is Albany is advocated by every group of the state, Department of Health, SED, DOT, every other department of, office of, in New York State, is going to Albany advocating for what they want, and you see announcements about funding various things, increasing the needs. This is what's happening to districts that have been save harmless, like Romulus. Of the four districts inside the county, two of the districts are losing significant, I'll call this predicted, state aid, and two are not. So, it all depends on how the formula applies to your school district. The other two districts were not save harmless districts in the first place, so this shift does not impact their...
Thank you.
I have a different set of conditions than some of the other districts. We're on the high end of what is being pulled out of the governor's son. That could change. I have not seen a midterm announcement between January and April in the past, but it's possible. We know that the Division of Budget meeting, we know that advocacy is taking place constantly, every day, people are sending things in, asking for representation in Albany. But what makes budget planning for school districts difficult in the first place is even when you do get an assistant from Governor Trump for state aid, you have to adopt a budget sometimes sooner than the legislature does. Many, many years, they were late, and then when Governor Trumbull was in for several years, they were on time. Last year, they were a little bit late, so we won't know for sure, so the committee will really have to make decisions between now and April 9, as we work with the supervisors in every department here to take a look at how potential state aid cuts could impact their case of government.
Well, how long has the state helped us with that question?
At least 10 years since I've been superintendent. I believe it's been in place as far back as 2007, 2008. The foundation aid formula that is currently used goes back to 2017.
I would also like to note that the governor did not make many decisions about electric buses within this budget so far.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah. We have been cautiously optimistic there might be some changes to the electric bus mandate because of the high costs that would come to the district, not only the charging stations, but for purchasing the buses and the challenges with mileage and distance and trying to plan the transportation routes up. So, we've been working with Mr. Einstein as well as Highland?
Highland is the company that made the proposals so far. They've been considering for some time.
Didn't they, when they submitted the mountain redo the...
They did, they did. So, they submitted two new service applications, one for 200 amps and one for 1,200 amps. And the planning team at NISI responded, the highest that the interconnect fee would be on their end would be $14,000. They're saying at this point for the electric service, that particular circuit could handle it without any other upgrades.
It can.
It can handle it at this point. That doesn't mean in 2027 or whenever that someone else won't add it or load to that circuit, and it can't handle it, but as of today, yes.
So, yeah, just, but, yes.
Luckily, we're not missing the electrication in yet, any of the 25 budget planning, but the mandate will not change until it's...
Yeah. So, you know, again, as a Board of Education, we're responsible for upholding the state laws, so we are putting plans in place without making any major purchases or decisions to plan for the electric bus mandate. And Mr. Ratt, Mr. Einstein, what's the new purchases in 25 after the electric, 27?
Right now, it's starting in 2027, all bus purchases have to be zero emission. You won't get any aid on anything if it's not zero emission. By 2035, all vehicles in operation is zero emission if the mandate doesn't change.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Any members?
Well, I just, you know, want to reiterate what a challenge and surprise this was with no forewarning with the state budget and the change to the aid program. So, this is nothing that we got a head up on or saw coming, but as a board, I guess, you know, we have three main objectives, to appoint the superintendent, to establish the budget, and to draft and implement, well, draft policies that then the administration would then implement. So, these are areas where, you know, we have what's called exclusive authority, and I won't speak in any more legal terms with our attorney sitting here in case I get something wrong, but these are areas where the board has exclusive authority, and this means that it is our responsibility. So, it's not our responsibility to run the school. We appoint the superintendent that runs the school, we set the budget within which the administration is charged with operating within the confines, the context of that budget, and then we also establish policy, again, establish the policy, the administration is responsible for following it. So, tonight, might as well load it all up, right? We've got superintendent search that we are focused on, we have the budgetary changes with a $500,000 reduction that we very need to, very quickly need to find a solution for that's going to be workable. So, appreciate any, you know, ideas, look forward to receiving the faculty and staff and department leads' input on the budget process, because it will definitely be a collaborative effort. So, the board, we've got, you know, some pretty important charges in front of us for areas that we're directly responsible for. So, appreciate all your time and help working on these, on these charges. All right. Thank you for your update, Mr. Ratt. Moving on to the top of page three, for real now, we went back and covered the other items. Apologies again for that. So, these items are provided to you in your electronic board packet, so I know that you have all had the opportunity to review these, so we'll try to move through these that, so that we can get approval on these, you know, knowing that we've already reviewed them through our electronic board packets that Mrs. Nicholson had sent us. So, 4.1.1.1, to accept the extra class monthly report for December 2023, authorizes superintendent to sign the MIA for the Setif County Board of Elections for the use of image cast electronic voting machines for the annual meeting, this would be for the budget vote and election, to authorize the creation of a full-time 12-month network administrator position for the 24-25 school year, this is the IT position that we had been talking about, and also to accept the treasurer's report for December 2023.
Can I ask a question before you ask the motion?
No, we need to do the motion first, then we'll do discussion.
I know.
And I talked to Mr. Robert, who drafted the rules of order, yes? So, to move on. Okay, now, discussion, Mr. Wilson.
So, on 4113, the authorization of the full-time 12-month network administrator, I would conclude to the board, we discussed this, we had no idea we would have a half million dollar reduction in our foundation aid. Could we place this on hold to give Marty and Ed time to use some of the work that we're planning to do over next week?
There is some justification for this position as opposed to outsourcing it. I believe it's a $35,000 savings if we can bring this in-house rather than outsourcing these services, but I will let Mr. Ratt, who knows more of the details, elaborate on that.
Depending on, you are right, this, this position could let these on savings, depending on how the hiring might go. This is just a creative position authorized by the board. This position may not end up in the board, but...
So, we're not wanting to post it?
This allows the position to be created and put onto our civil service roster of this county. If you don't want to post it, you don't need to post it. This is just a creation or a position on the civil service roster.
I know in previous meetings, though, we talked about not opening positions if we weren't going to actively put it up there. So, I would understand what the terms or reservations are, and maybe we could hold off on creating a position a little bit longer.
It's just on the roster, it's not actually creating the position, because it is a canvas, this is a C F, it's like being in a canvas position, I'm saying. So, like, it'll be there, not in the budget, but potentially could be.
Oh, we're going to... Correct.
Then absolutely to appoint someone to it. So, this is just kind of a starting thing so that we would have the option to pull the trigger, because it is, you know, I don't want to say a lengthy process, but it's not quick, right? Can you link?
Any of these candidates have these spots, but you don't want to... Any of these candidates have these few months, but if you don't want to have the perception of improving the position, to me, that is definitely going to be by janitorial adding a position in light of cuts, you could maybe, this, this step would allow us to have the position.
What do you have to say then? I see you chomping at the bit.
So coming from the guy who puts the brakes on all the time, this is, this is actually an opportunity to help us out with the budget, potential savings there, depending on the right candidate. So right now, worst-case scenario is in the budget, if things go the way you'd like, then it would be savings.
So you're saying it's a gray line?
I would, I'd be in favor. No, I'd be in favor of going forward with the position, posting it, and then, you know, the actual hiring, you know.
Because services that are being...
Sure. Services that were used from the outside could be used.
And we're spending money on.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, just to clarify, so this position is currently outsourced to a shared position to two different individuals? So the goal would be to bring it in-house, have one person who's solely focused on Romulus' IT needs, and it would represent a savings of $35,000. Yeah, and I don't forget the numbers that you told me, I hold that one right off the top of my head, so, yeah, but this, this would be an opportunity to save. And again, if we decide to change course with, as we roll out, we don't have to appoint someone to this position, this is just simply posting it so that it can be, you know, filled if we need it to, to start the steps of that. It's a reduction in shared services, so it would be a savings to the district. It's insourcing, Mr. Roth, bringing it, bringing it back in-house, and, you know, the hope too would be that we would have better service from that by having someone that would be solely focused on Romulus' needs. So, thank you, good discussion. Any more discussion on the items in 4.1.1? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? That was slide two.
Slide two.
So 4.1 is passed, approved. Moving down to personnel, session six, resolution in regards to administrators and teachers to act upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following personnel issues: to appoint Jamie Thompson as play target lead co-advisor for the 23-24 season at a stipend of $750. Moving on to page four. Oh, that is it. Any motion, please? Discussion?
How many students are in the play target lead?
I don't know exactly how many, it's good to see. Ten of us.
And this is a co-adviser, so how many advisors are there on the play target lead?
There are two coaches right now, two advisors this week.
Maybe there are ways to handle a volunteer position, and perhaps some other...
We could ask.
I just think there are a lot of people that are smaller than that, but some of them are larger than that, I don't know how many.
Do you have any ideas? Did your... Well, we have two coaches that were running. And this piece, it was more of recording the data that needs to go in our state time to go to the department of state. So this is more of a bargaining campaign, so we usually have two individuals that live in the district directly, and then the third one, and helped out with a little student that was done.
I definitely want a safe environment for the kids, know that there's a lot of reporting and data with, you know, having students using firearms, you know, it's definitely safe, there's a lot of protocols and requirements around it, so I can see, you know, definitely feel that a co-advisor is needed. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Seven hundred and fifty dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, I mean, I've just asked. I mean, I know most of all coaches, right, they're all volunteers except for the head coach, right? If the numbers support three people, I think that that's great, if the numbers are taller than some organizations that have two, I think that's a good question. I mean, I know what they're going for, too.
So is the $750 in this year's budget?
Yeah, it is.
So it is a budgeted item, so it would not affect this year's budget, and this does not guarantee an appointment for next year when we're facing the cuts, so this is a planned expense. But thank you for asking, it's always, always appreciate somewhat other than Mr. Neistat handling the breaks, it's like we've got the break and the emergency break, so we're definitely set, appreciate the balance. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, so this has been approved. Moving on to section seven, resolutions to act upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following placement and academic opportunities. We have the minutes from the Committee on Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education, and the section 504 meeting minutes. Discussion? All in favor?
What you got? What are you going to think?
He's working his way through his papers over there. All right, did I miss any items on our agenda? Board members, did we miss any items on the agenda? Were we at the end? Do we need any second question? The board does need to call an executive session to discuss matters of collective negotiations, bargaining negotiations? Yes, collective bargaining negotiations. There will be no further action taken after the executive session. How should we do this? Should we ask the board to take a break, or are we going to go to another, or go back to the boardroom? Yep, so we've reached the conclusion in our meeting. The board will now move into executive session and continue with our votes. Okay, are you there? Is that going to be here? It's got to vote to go into executive. Okay, like a motion to go into executive, need discussion? Yes, we would like to invite Stacy Tamborino to join us in the executive session as well as Mr. Roth as superintendent of the district, and I would also like to invite Allison Marley to join us in executive session. We will be holding this executive session in the boardroom. There will be no further action.
Who seconded that?
Eric.
Eric, thank you.
All in favor of going into executive session?
Excuse me. Is there going to be an eleven public comment second session after convening from executive session? It's on the agenda.
We did not receive a request for additional public comments, so no, there will be no second public comment, because we have, we did not receive any requests in writing for public comments.
Well, we did request the first one that we came in, we requested that, and it looks like this is an opportunity to say anything we might not have been able to do in the first public comment.
The process is that any public comments need to be submitted in writing prior to the start of the meeting.
So you tell me we have to do a public comment for section one, and then a public comment for section two?
Session two of the public comments is for people who may come in late and submit a request prior, or, you know, if we don't have time to get to everything at the beginning, sometimes we...
What do you mean if you don't have time to get to everything at the beginning? This says public comment section two. So I'm asking, if I would have filled out two sessions to be able to speak, would I be allowed to speak in section two? It's very c... To me, it seems like if you fill out a card that you want to speak, you get your first time, and then you're also asked. It's on your agenda, that's what I'm surprised about.
As per the agenda, individual comments are limited to five minutes per person, and we've not received any additional requests for public comments, so we do not have a need to have the second public comment session. The public comments were held at the beginning of the meeting.
So you do a second session, and if somebody comes late and then I have to give Suzie's attention to form to get a second session? I'm not understanding, sorry.
There's only one, one comment per person, limited to five minutes, and the requests are submitted in, in writing for the public comment.
So if I come in two weeks, can I put down exactly which session I want, either session one or section two? Because maybe I should have spoke after session two, taken my time to do session two.
Yeah, session two is reserved for people who might have public comments about things that have come up in the agenda. You reserve your right to think about that, but nothing has been submitted in writing, and we have not received an official request. I apologize, you're welcome to communicate with us via email for further clarification.
I understand, but it's on your agenda, so I shouldn't be able to ask a question.
And the board has now gone into executive session, and will be going to the boardroom to continue our meeting, the executive session. Please send your concerns to us in writing, and then we can address them via that mechanism. But right now, the board is in executive session and needs to proceed with this meeting. So thank you all for coming, I appreciate, appreciate you.
The parking lot may be a little dicey, so please be careful as you walk, okay?